I call this board work session to order. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Cook.
All righty. Good morning. I'm going to introduce everybody. I think we all know who they are. But for the recording that we're doing and setting up, I want to make sure that we introduce. The whole board is here, so along with Mr. Kaperski, Dr. Corbett, and Dr. You, Dr. Greggo.[29.52][29.52](Laughter).
Wow.
See how quickly he's gone in my mind?[34.04][34.04](Laughter). But one thing that I do want to ask is that as we're speaking, apparently you can't identify who's speaking and who's not. So if your name hasn't been called, if you would just say your name for the recording so people know, because we've had those comments made.
Okay.
So we have with us today, this is Andrea, Ms. Andrea Messina, and Mr. Bill Vogel.
That's it.
Jen is not with us, okay. And Stacy Byer is here. And we also have Kathy Howke, who is our administrative assistant, as well as all the board members. So thank you all for being here. And I'm going to just turn it right over to you all so that we can get started.
Well, thank you, and good morning. We wanted to start with a few of your unfinished items, just to kind of close those matters up before we get into the discussion part of the pre-search interview. And I know we've worked with Mr. Kaperski, you all have worked with Mr. Kaperski on the job description. So I don't know, Ms. Cook, if I turn it over to you, if I turn over the chair, or Mr. Kaperski for that.[104.14][104.14](Laughter).
You can, if that's okay, Madam Chair.
Yes, absolutely.
This is David Kaperski speaking. You did see posted on the website for the agenda materials, I believe it was early yesterday or yesterday midday, you see after we worked on it last week, a revision. You have it both in clean copy and in redlined version. Gave you the clean copy because I didn't want you to be scared looking at the redlined version. But when you said bare bones, I took that literally. And so what we have now is a proposed, for your review, a proposed job description for superintendent of schools. So it might just be easier to take a look at the clean version. But we changed the supervises, we changed the major function, we changed the essential responsibilities and the terms of employment. And you can read it, but in essence, basically says that the superintendent's role, functions, and responsibilities are those defined by law. And he supervises people who report to him. And I want to make clear that the board approves all other job descriptions. So if there's anybody that needs to report to the superintendent in the future that's new, you would not need to change the superintendent's job description, but you would be changing that other job description. And so you would know that, and so the board would have control over who the superintendent supervises by virtue of those other job descriptions. And then, of course, the terms of employment, and I see a typo in there, but terms of employment is just going to be those as defined by contract, which will be negotiated with the new superintendent, hopefully in a couple of months. So if there are no questions here, I would recommend that this come to the board for action at a future regular meeting. And then we will have that. But are there any questions of this, or any concerns or suggestions for edits?
Ms. Edman?
I just want to make clear that if there is a removal or repel of a job description, that would also come before the board, just as if there are amendments to a job description.
Yeah, the board deals with the organizational charge. And so, yeah, if, let's say, the division of teaching and learning is eliminated, the board would be aware of that, and actions would be taken on that.
So we could bring it to next week's meeting?
We can.
Okay.
It will be on your regular meeting agenda a week from today for approval. Does the board have a pleasure as to where that is? We usually just put job descriptions in with the HR, and I believe you'll be seeing other ones next week.
There'll be other ones too.
Yeah, just put it in with those.
Yeah, I'd just put them in there together.
Okay.
Go, Cook.
Very good, thank you.
All right. Yes, thank you. We have a few additional items. I'd like to, while we have Dr. Byer here, review the survey draft, which we revised. And let me see, there it is. It's also attached to your agenda. And I'll let Dr. Byer explain to you the process that we went through to get the revisions and what you're looking at.
Thank you very much. So we took the feedback from the meeting last time, and I worked with Jen to get the choices so that they would align to the district's strategic plan. We aligned the successes and strengths that is the same list that you'll find on the biggest challenges, so we made the list exactly the same. We did end up removing the question around, I think it said something like, what part of the county or what municipality are you in? We were already collecting what zip code people were responding from. And since this is not a survey or meant to be about individual schools, it's really about the district as a whole. If you remember, that actually was not something I had suggested we put in there, it was something the survey company put in there. And when we sort of discussed, went back to the true intent of the survey, it made more sense that we would be able to disaggregate responses based on where they were coming from, because we were asking for individuals' zip codes. So we ended up removing that piece from the survey. And made just a few edits to the list around the leadership qualities that we want the superintendent to possess. The only other thing I'll mention, in case it pops up, but you have to be really in the weeds, is we did try to, sometimes in the choices around successes and challenges, it would be like two, let's just say it was something like, instruction in curriculum is how the strategic plan is written. But we separated it out, because when you have two choices and you don't know which one they're actually picking. So we did have to, there were maybe like five that we had to separate out, make them their own options. But otherwise, this is the latest and greatest version. We have the language that we'll use from a communications perspective to get it out, and we're ready to go after.
And I do want to remind you also, this is not a change, but each person who's taking the survey, the lists will be randomized. So if you took it, they would be in one order, or if he took it, it would be in a different order, so that the true content is what they go for, not, they won't just go to the first choices and not see the second. They'll be fully randomized for each person completing the survey.
It may look awkward at times, because other will show up randomized as well. There's not a way to sort of hold that one out, but it is what it is. It's more important for it to be randomized.
Carol, Ms. Cook?
Yes, I want to just say that I think this is excellent. It's more in line with what I was hoping that we would see. So thank you very much. Jen, as well as Dr. Byer, thank you so much for doing this. I think this is an excellent survey. Ms. Edman?
I think the survey is good. I know we have, at the bottom where it lists the different places the forums will take place. And after we have conversation regarding the survey, I would like to talk about the forums.
Yes, ma'am. That's the next item on the list, you got it. Because that will need to be changed if something does change. Yes. Dr. Carr?
My question is just, I know we've done the focus groups already with leadership and administration. If there were any, from the results of that, if there were any things that we felt like were missed, or anything that those groups brought forward that should be included in particularly the qualities of leadership? Were those incorporated into this, or did you see already after that?
One thing that worked out really well is, as soon as we finished our morning session, of course Jen and Beth were with us. So Jen got our results and looked at them.
And they are included.
And included those in there. So the timing could not have been perfect for that. Good question, thank you.
And thanks for no double barrels. A lot of people are on the works.
Any other questions on that? Then the other piece that's associated with the survey is a slight shift in the dates, which are reflected on the timeline proposal that you have. And that is, rather than saying that we're going to have it out today through the 25th, we're proposing the 16th, which is tomorrow, just to pull all that together. And rather than ending on the 28th, we wanted to end on the, excuse me, rather than ending on the 25th, we wanted to end on the 28th. And then the week of March 3rd is when we would be able to get the results to you, which is still before your work session on the 10th. So if there's no objections to that, we'll just shift that ever so slightly to accommodate. All right. So then timeline, job description, survey draft. The next item would be the one that Ms. Edman just recently referenced, which is the locations of the community forums. We have them listed as Pinellas Park on the 23rd, Countryside High School on the 24th, and St. Pete High School on the 28th. But I know, Ms. Edman, you wanted to have some conversation about that.
Yes. So many of you have already seen letters or emails from some people from South St. Pete as it relates to a location and consideration for having one further south. My question to this board is, is there interest in having a fourth forum further south? I know we've already put out that we would have one at St. Pete High School. So again, my question is, instead of changing St. Pete High, is there interest in having one at Lakewood High School, which would be further south?
Ms. Carol Cook. I'll start off by saying, I don't think it's a good idea for us to do that, because if we're doing a second one in one area, we should be having a second one in the north as well, because we're asking people from Tarpon to come down to Countryside, which is probably about the same amount of driving distance and time. If we weren't going to be doing this virtually as well as in person, I might have a different opinion and have two more, one north and one south. When we were trying to decide this, I talked to Dr. Brim, our strategic partnership, and talked to her about it. And the question became, is this one for South St. Pete? Is this one for the African-American community? Or is it for South County? And it is for South County, at which point she said, she believed that St. Pete High School would be the best also. So I would recommend that we stay the same, but I'm open to hear what anybody else may have to say.
I agree. I agree with that. I think by moving it to Lakewood, it's almost like you're excluding part of the city. I think St. Pete makes sense, it's easy accessible. With the interstate, with US-19, it's a lot easier to get to, I think. And it's within easy traveling distance from those two. It's a lot easier to get to, I think. And I think that makes most sense.
Chair, Long?
Yes, I agree with Mrs. Cook. When you look at Countryside, we have a large African-American population in Tarpon Springs, which a lot of them do not have vehicles. And so if you did that for the south side, you'd have to do it from the north side, because now you're, you know, you're excluding them. So I think the way it is, and the fact that it's virtual as well, we should just leave it as it is.
Dr. Corbett, did you mention that there would be a way of getting transportation from one place to St. Pete High?
We explored that idea, but we decided when we realized that they were all three virtual, we didn't think that idea was necessary. And it was the same issue. If we did one for St. Pete, do we have to do one for either of the two? And if we did one for each, do we need to do two or three for each? We felt like the virtual option kind of negated the need to have transportation.
And, go ahead.
Well, I think the same hurdles around transportation are also around technology. So I think that if we're trying to reach individuals who have socioeconomic challenges around access, those access points are both technology and transportation. So it might, if it is available and feasible, and we've done it in the past for many other activities, where we could possibly offer transportation at Tarpon for folks to get to Countryside, and perhaps at Lakewood for folks to get to St. Pete. We have the availability. I think it would be a nice middle ground to be, you know, since you make an excellent point about Tarpon having challenges with access, it's just as far. So maybe we could have both of those, you know, farther, way farther north and way farther south to be able to attend one of them as an option. So I know we have free transportation for kids and staff now with the public transit, but not necessarily for families and communities. So maybe a nice sort of middle spot for that, or to increase access could be just transportation at those two sites for those two events.
This is Ilyna Long. What if we take a site South County, like Lakewood? And in Tarpon, we could do even the community center and make that the virtual spot for those people to go at those nights. So then they could go and participate virtually if their technology challenge, like myself. You know, they'll have a place to go where maybe someone could help them and monitor them, and make sure that they're comfortable being a part of it. And then we wouldn't have to take two more nights. But we're solving the problem that way.
We could open up a media center at Lakewood easily for that period of time, have somebody there. It's just a whole lot easier than, I don't know where our activity buses are, we have sports going on.
That's true.
We got a lot going on, so we could easily do that. It might be a good.
And Tarpon fundamental would solve, because that's that neighborhood right there. Give them an opportunity.
And it's another opportunity for families to come to our facilities and engage. So I think that's a great idea.
Let's also look at the Greenwood area and see.
Another spot, yes.
For another place.
Yes.
You know, if we're going to do it for African-American communities, I think we need to, you know, but then we can get into the Hispanic communities, we can get into all of this stuff, so.
You have the Hispanic outreach center.
Yeah.
I mean, we need to be sensitive of all, but we also need to.
We have a key for my wife.
With their cell phones.
It's true, because the access from Clearwater to Pinellas Park is the distance, too. Depending on where you are. From Dunedin to Countryside is 20 minutes, so it depends.
So maybe making the media centers available at some additional.
How many would we need to do?
I don't want to.
You've got staff on each of those.
Yeah, we don't want to go overboard.
You know, we also have the survey that's going out, where they can give their input. We also can access via cell phones. So I don't know that access is as huge an issue as it might have been in the past, too.
So how do you want us to proceed?
Status quo.
I think, I like Mrs. Long's idea of at least having a couple, maybe we say three additional media centers available in farthest proximity to those locations. So, you know, farther proximity to each of those nights. So on the 23rd, the 24th, and the 28th, we ask staff to have a media center available to the community.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Logistically?
They're.[1125.58][1125.58](Laughter).
Because we would have to staff them. And in the participation of how we're doing the virtual, we would need to make sure that everyone has individual technology. So we would also have to bring iPads or something like that to make sure if they couldn't access on their phone, because of how we've set up for virtual to actually be able to participate, it's not just a.
Rather than just listen.
Listen. We actually build in those kind of sessions. And it's not necessarily like an open mic, because it's going on at the same time as the live event. So there's just, would be a lot of logistics to opening up additional sites that are not just having a staff member at a school site there. It would also mean making sure all the technol, like all of those things.
Ms. Cook?
Since we're basically gathering the same information with the survey that's going out, could we let people know that they could go to a school to fill out the survey? So it may not be that night, but if they don't have access to the internet, they could go to a school site and where the volunteers used to sign in or something, let them work and do the survey at that location, at any time during this period. So, you know, we don't have lines of people waiting on a particular day. But if they can't access the internet, they could access it at a school.
I do know some districts have done something similar to that, where, you know, in their office area, they have a setup for families if they need to come in and use the internet for any reason. And they just make it clear, either through the principal doing one of the phone calls out, hey, look for the survey, go on the website, if you can't do the website, come into the office and use our computer. So that has been successful in other districts.
And then we could do it, just leave it, you know, the three locations, and then give them more access to the survey itself.
Dr. Carr?
I guess I don't understand logistics issue, Ms. Dahl. If, and if we're expecting folks to be able to log in virtually from home and participate virtually on their own, how can they not just log in from a computer in a media center where there's computers? So, I mean, if we're expecting families to do virtual, as in, we're saying, okay, well, they can participate in this, and we're not going to have it in other locations, because there's a virtual option. I know there's the survey too, but like, there's a virtual option. How is it that it's too difficult for us to have a staff member where there are computers, but it's not too difficult for them to do it at home where there's a computer? I guess I'm just thinking, can't we have computers available for folks to then log in and watch the meeting and participate? Right? Because if they're participating at home.
We'd have to either pick the sites by where a media center has computers readily available?
We could do it.
Or we would have to bring in computers to be able to do that.
But our computer, our high schools have computer labs. So can't a group of parents come in and just use a computer lab? That seems like kind of a low-line fruit option for us.
Well-identified, three. Is the board, which, three?
Three. One for each night.
Tarpon High, Lakewood High, and what do you want to do to mirror Pinellas Park? How ones?
What about the middle school? Fundamental, close to that.
Yes.
Close to Greenwood.
We could do Coach Center, we could do. We could do Chlorophyll. Okay.
Yeah, because that would get the Hispanic community as well.
Lakewood High School, Tarpon Springs High School, and Oak Grove.
Oak Grove.
Oak Grove?
Tarpon, Lakewood.
Yeah.
And that hits the Hispanic community as well.
Good.
No, that doesn't have to be.
Can we possibly have the staff members, when we do this, just kind of give us some general information about how many people utilize the service? So we know in future if it's something that we want to do again for any other purpose, just to see, you know, in what areas are more frequently being used as well?
Good.
Okay. Ms. Edman?
I would like to say that it was important that we had this conversation, and I appreciate everyone's contribution to the conversation. Thank you, Dr. Greggo, Dr. Corbett, for making the soundless work. Thank you, Mrs. Cook, for mentioning the Hispanic community, as well as all parts of the county, so that we can accommodate to our best, to accommodate and include all.
Thank you. Sure.
Okay. What we'll do, we have the timeline with the change on the, when the survey's going out. Now, as soon as Jen and Beth decide where we can have the other session with board permission, we'll add those virtual sessions to the calendar. So right now, I'm not hearing any objection for this revised calendar that has the survey date. The understanding, we'll add those others. I'll work with them to go ahead and add them. Okay, great, thank you. Also, before we get started, I want to compliment your tech team.
Oh, my gosh, they are amazing.
And the communications team is the right term, but Sean Briggs, and Sean Clark, and Kyle Bell, and of course Beth, and Jen. I mean, it worked out extremely well. Our first session had 49 district-level leaders, and we did that one in person. And the results are available for you to look at. That went extremely well. Whoever follows Dr. Greggo is going to have an unbelievable team. I mean, it was very, very productive. And then the afternoon session, because it was new to me, I was still asking a lot of questions. I thought you were going to pull this off. But it really was phenomenal. And so I just want to compliment them. Board members, to see them in action was just an unbelievable experience. So I just wanted to say, it was really good that we had those two sessions early on, because we were able to figure out how all of this worked together. But I'm very optimistic, we're going to have some phenomenal input throughout this process, so.
Yeah, and you're, I participated by phone, actually while I was driving. But I got to tell you, your administrators are so proud of this district and so committed to the work that they do. It really was inspiring to hear their conversation. It was really impressive. Dr. Byer, you want to say something?
Just one last thing. Since the survey is going live tomorrow, I'm just going to add that remote participation options will be available, and I'll link to the website so that you're getting that information.
I just want to clarify, what I'm understanding is, we're going to open up the Lakewood site at the evening that St. Pete is open. We're going to open up the Tarpon site at the evening at the Countryside, not all three nights for all. Okay, that's.
Correct, yeah.
I want to clarify that.
So we're going to use just Lakewood and Tarpon sites, those two.
There'll be a third.
There'll be Oak Grove, the evening that Pinellas Park is open. The evening that we have at Pinellas Park. So we'll be doing it the same evenings that geographically that were, okay.
That being said, anyone can click a link and join any one of them for their own schedule convenience. And I'm saying that in case people are listening to this.
They could do all three.
Correct.
I mean, if anyone really is that for good life, they could do all three of these. And so. What's that?
And the survey.
And the survey. And census.
Okay, then if there is no further unfinished business, and I don't have anymore on my list, I'd like to move us to the pre-search work session conversation. And I know that you guys had a little bit of kind of questions about this, and the whole point of this part of the search is that we have a conversation. We, your team, want to hear from you, the governance team in this district, what you sort of believe the status is of these items that we're going to work through, what you might identify as the greatest successes and/or challenges in any of these categories. And the first category is actually, you know, your guiding principles, which is your vision, your mission, and your beliefs. Now, I know you call them different. You call them, I see your vision as 100% student success. Your mission is educate and prepare each student for college, career, and life. You have core values, commitment to children, family, families and community, respectful and caring relationships, cultural competency, integrity, responsibility, connectedness. And then you also have your strategic direction. So they're all, like, I found them on your website, so they're not difficult to find. But the question that I have for you is, how pervasive are they through the district? Do the schools know about these things? Do the parents know about these things? Do your business partners know about these things? How pervasive are they throughout the district? And this is honestly just a conversation. So, I don't know, sitting around a table like this, if you normally do call on each other, but I'm perfectly fine with us just having a discussion.
As long as they say their names.
As long as they say their names, correct. Thank you, this is Andrea. So, talk to me about the pervasiveness of these guiding principles throughout the district.
This is Carol, and I believe if you ask anyone in any of the schools what the vision and the mission are, they would be able to tell you. Maybe not elementary school children, but any adult.
When, this is Bill Corbett, when we have, um... When we do our surveys, even when Saks come in, this is the highest response rate that we receive under the governance aspect of the accreditation process. It is a major strand accreditation of school districts. And this is always, both Ben and Beth and Jen would affirm that, but this is always the highest response, positive response rate.
That's really good, because, as you well know, in many districts, that is not the case. Ms. Heim, did I see your hand? But we don't have to raise hands.
Why are you asking the question? I'm curious about the question.
When we have people who are interested in coming to this district, they will call us and ask a lot of questions. And they want to know, you know, is the community really on board?
I wasn't sure if this question was informing our qualifications package, or I just wasn't sure what the question was informing.
It's informing our understanding of the district so that we can work, try to, with the recruiting part. But also, it's so that you all hear what the others are saying. And if there's a dispute, we'll know that there, maybe it's not a hundred percent that everyone agrees that this issue is where it is. And maybe there's room for improvement in this area, but that that area is one we want to protect and can kind of keep the way it is. Yes?
I think internally that that has been very successful. And when I go to schools, I hear that from leadership, from teachers, from staff. Where I think we're working on improving is community outreach and business partnership to get that mission and that vision out to the grander areas of Pinellas County. Because some businesses that maybe have been working alongside Pinellas County Schools for many years know that, but there's a lot of the business community in Pinellas that does, is not connected to that mission or idea yet. And I think we have been making huge strides. It's part of our strategic plan, and principals are working really hard to do that. But it's still, like, in the process. So, if somebody was asked, like, where are we in that, I think we're still working towards that.
Any other thoughts on this item?
One thing that I think is very impressive is when I look in the elevator, I see the vision, the mission. I think that's really excellent. And one question I might have is I see this is through 2022. So, is there an ongoing process for revision?
We do an annual strategic plan. The next superintendent may not, I just believe in annual strategic plans. A lot of people like three, five years, but I think we get more movement out of the annual strategic plan.
And we have a strong, well, we've worked, I think, to have strong feedback loops on the district strategic plan because it's developed annually, and it's aligned to our school improvement plans. Also, any of our agenda items are, it explains specifically within them what area of the strategic plan it's tied to, and the strategic plan drives the budget. And because we had such a strong strategic plan in place, as well as a strategic plan process, the, when these additional funds came through, we had both a process and a plan to hang things on.
So, then, with regard specifically to your strategic plan priorities, the things that you think are immediately the ones that are going to have to be addressed within the first year, and it may be Dr. Grego that says, you know, here are the ones that we got to really push forward, and then let's talk about kind of the five-year ones. So, what would be the immediate goals that you say, these are the ones we really got to focus and hone in on?
Closing the achievement gap.
Okay.
I would suggest that's the purpose of an annual strategic plan. I differ with that, so every action goal is a priority. Not two years, but not three years. Now, we may not finish it this year, but there has to be an annual progress measure of that. And that's the culture that we've attempted to build in this district. So, sometimes five-year strategic plans, people say, well, we'll get to that.
Yeah, wait till year four.
Every one of these actionable goals are measured on a quarterly and annual basis, and my evaluation is tied to it. So, the board members have an opportunity to see. Sometimes it's outside circumstances, especially the last two years, that sometimes throw, throws a monkey wrench in it. But the fact is, is that that's the culture of moving everything forward. So, are there priorities? Sure, I think there, each one of these is a priority for the people who own, or the person who owns every one of the action items, so it's their priority. Fine arts, performing arts, CTE, early childhood education, student gap issues, they're all priorities that is.
Any other comments on that? Um, Dr. Carr?
And this is Nicole. The, to align with what Dr. Grego said, each item has a person assigned. So, there's, and the goals, for the most part, are measurable. So, when you, at least the objectives within each goal. So, they're measurable, and the Stilf Division oversees the progress monitoring. I mean, there's, there's an ongoing progress monitoring cycle with individuals who bear responsibility. So, there's not like this ambiguous, this is who, this is what the goal was, and nobody knows who's doing what, where, and when. It's, it's very, it's pretty explicit. And like you said, we, as a board, have the opportunity to dig in and look at the measures and see which, what progress has and has not been made. And that's reflected in the evaluation of the superintendent.
Ms. Cook?
Yep. Yeah, to Nicole's point, there are notebooks with the data that we can go through. But let me give you an example of kind of how this has worked as a five-year plan, but also yearly. Several years ago, our, in our strategic plan, it was, for example, to bring our schools, all A, B, and C schools. Okay, and we worked, and we worked at that. This year, it's now all A and B schools. The ultimate goal is to be an A district.
Right.
And we want all of our schools to be an A school. But what was our first, first goal? Was to get everybody up to become a C. All right, now we've accomplished that, and we did that during that year. So, now we move it away, and now it's A and B schools. So, we see long-term, but this is written for what are we going to accomplish this year?
And I think that by going annually, everyone is held accountable. And I think if we went back to longer than annual, sometimes you lose sight of that goal. And, you know, with the new superintendent coming in and having to adjust to our district, I think annually will keep, help keep that person going with the flow as well.
I think we didn't talk a lot about the beliefs section.
Okay.
And we're talking a lot about vision and mission. But beliefs is the motivation behind all of this. And I think that that's where we're connecting these different goals. Because our belief connected to the mission of educating for college, career, and life. So, we're looking at children, you can't say, you know, that the achievement gap is more important than maybe their extracurricular opportunities or their career opportunities, because we're trying to guide them to have a full and complete life. And so, they hold equal weight, which is what Dr. Grego said, and that we're simultaneously wanting to be able to offer college and career opportunities for children who may not want to go to college. They may want career opportunities, they may want arts opportunities, they may want sports opportunities. Those things hold equal weight in the belief, because we're, the belief is that we want to help children in all areas, not just for the achievement gap or their reading score level, or their, or the grade level of the school, but in all ways, so that our schools are a good environment. So, and I don't know, what did you get from our literature on what the belief section was? Can you repeat what you got?
I looked at the core values as kind of being the belief section, which has the commitment to children, families, community, that part. People call them different things. In fact, not everybody even uses the words vision, mission. They use different phraseology. But I looked at your core values as sort of your guiding, you know, compass, which is really what beliefs tend to be. I think you could phrase it as beliefs equally. Am I incorrect in that?
No, I think you're right. I just, interesting to see what an outside person view says that, because that was one of the topics of discussion in our board training, too, is what are your beliefs, and how are you using them in the strategic plan? So, it's interesting to see if it's reflective, and good for us to reflect on that.
And Ms. Kane, you mentioned the, the mission that includes career and life, those, that piece of the language there. And you also mentioned about how the business community, there are some businesses that maybe aren't as connected. To me, those are the two, those three words are the ones that will bring those businesses in with the district. So, you've got them there.
Right, and it's already working. It's just if someone was coming in to apply for that position, I think they need to know where we are in that. And that, you know, we're not going to sit here and say, oh, everybody knows, and it's all great. I don't know that it is in every area of, because Pinellas is a big county, it's a big district. And I think, but I will say, internally, I haven't been to a school that doesn't know that. So, I think internally, we've been very successful in driving forth the mission and the vision. Because there isn't a staff member that I've talked to that's not clear on that, or doing it.
Well, and for a district this size, that's really saying something, because there are many, many smaller districts that couldn't say what you just said.
There are school board members who don't know the vision and mission.
That is true. No, that's true.
That's absolutely right.
Not here. Other places. But I'm telling you, it's true.
Well, and see, that, that really does tell us something about the district and the shared goals. Because when you have disparate goals, that's when there's some fracturing, when everyone at least is focused on the same goals, with the same mission, with the same vision. That is something that people ask us about. They want to know how pervasive it is, because that is an indication of how functioning the district is. And it's impressive to hear what you all have going on here, especially with a district this size. Even for a smaller district, it would be impressive. But, I mean, just sitting at the table, you've got your Ed Foundation, who's done a lot of work already. We can't say that in every district. And the focus on mission and vision, if people know what they're doing and why they're doing it, it gives a different purpose to their daily work, and they spend a lot of time here. So, having purpose is really important.
To that point, I think it's important for whoever's coming in to understand the role that the foundation has played and in our, accomplishing our mission. Because they are a key factor in the career and technical education. You know, providing people, but also holding us accountable as they come in and see, are we really living up to what we're saying? Are we just calling this a culinary school? Are we just calling this, you know, something with aviation or whatever? So, they're coming in and holding us to high standards as well. So, they're critical in the whole.
We call them the critical friend, right?
That's right.
The connectivity is very impressive. How...
In both ways.
How your vision, mission, your core values, beliefs drive what you do, and your goals. And it, and it is pervasive throughout the system. From the short period of time when we talked with the district staff and the principals, I mean, I really saw evidence of that. For someone coming in, it is very helpful to look at this document, because this could, will show that person where we are. And what we want is someone to come in and not reinvent. We want someone, we already have our strategic plan here. We want someone that's going to be able to continue and move this forward. And I really agree with Dr. Grego on the annual, the annual goals are excellent. And I think when you were out, Ms. Cook gave a good example of how that works. Great work on this plan.
What are some emerging issues in the district that somebody coming in here is going to have to consider as they continue to build the next strategic plan for next year? What are some emerging issues?
This is Nicole. The, I think the legislative actions and the impact that the legislation, legislature has on the autonomy of the district. So, you know, so much of what a superintendent is required to do is by law. And so, the, the legislator has always, there's always been legislation that's come down to impact districts. But I think there's been a greater level coming from the legislation, legislature. And it's not with educate, there's not an abundant amount of educational expertise being utilized to develop the legislation. So, in the past, the legislation was often developed by folks in the Department of Education or by, with more input from districts and practitioners. Whereas, much of the legislation occurring now may not consider or factor in how it's going to be implemented, or, you know, typically, you get the legislation, then you get the rule, then you get the technical assistance. And that timeline is just really different. And sometimes things are coming out, and with those pieces, it's really hard to develop, so they're all over the place. And I think that's some, particularly someone, if we have folks coming from a different state or other areas, that they, they really want to be aware of the current situations taking place in Florida and legislation, and how it's really, does take away from some of the abilities of a school board to govern, and the abilities of a superintendent to move forward their agenda.
Mr. Dudley?
Well, I think the, to me, the biggest problem is we have those. People have some idea of what we want to do in education, and as we take a step forward, everything becomes political. And when, you know, we get some pretty good ideas, it's not okay to jump on board with them because it's not politically the right thing to do. And I think that we suffer a great deal. If we could get unification, we get people who say, you know, that's a good idea. Put the R and Ds behind you, and just, you know, it's a good idea, what's in the best interest of our kids. And I see that as, you know, I'm hearing committee reports coming out of Tallahassee, they put it on the news, and immediately say, well, the other side says this. So, you know, it's like, it's counterproductive. You take two steps forward, you get, you know, either two or three going in the other direction. So, you really accomplish anything. And to me, we have got to get unification. And school districts have an idea of what they want to do. I mean, we're here to educate kids. And what's happened is that those people outside of the education sphere, they have a different agenda. And I think she's right that politically, and what comes out of Tallahassee is, sometimes is counterproductive. And I think people get that attitude that, well, they know what the hell they're doing in Tallahassee. You know, they know. You know, we're not going to get any time, because Republicans are in, in control, and the Democrats want something different. And it's, it's just, it's very, it's very disheartening at times. Because I know what we're trying to do here, and we can't accomplish it because we can't get the people who are making those decisions to jump on board with us. And I think that if people do some investigating, I mean, we can say, worse than coming in from out of state. Well, you know, we, our state legislature is doing this, they're looking, oh, that, that's great. And then after they get here, they realize, well, what happened? You know, well, politics jumped in and changed some of that, so. What the answer is, I don't know.
I'm not sure there's a specific answer that we're looking for, but we just want to know what are the emerging issues? So, we have politics, we have directives from the legislature that maybe we're, I'm going to come here, and then I'm going to come here. Yes, ma'am?
I'm just thinking more specifics, when you're asking specifically what are emerging issues. And I think I came up with about three or four. And I think I came up with about three or four that are, uh, kind of current affairs of Pinellas County.
Yes.
First being, um, obviously the impact of COVID and the, um, the reduction in growth, you know, educationally. We need to obviously regain, regain our losses from the pandemic years, about a 2% loss. Um, I think, um, what a new person may be looking at is how utilize technology growth because of the pandemic. We had put in place PCS Connect. We have an incredible foundation to build on. And someone coming in is going to have to build on that and how we're going to continue using PCS Connect in an effective way educationally. Um, and, you know, it's already connected to Canvas. We have a great structure for learning through our technology that we've been investing in. And then the new person is just going to have to look to the future, like what's the future of education there? That's futuristic kind of mindset, um, and how we're going to use that. Also our early education expansion, we're having kind of a building issue in that some of the areas where we have a lot of early education growth, there isn't physical space in the building. So we're going to have to be looking at how are we going to pay for the expansion of those? Uh, because there's been a couple of buildings where they're free cases full, you know? And what are we going to do? We have kids coming in. So that's going to be an emerging issue in the future. I think we're just only going to grow the program because that's been one of our major focuses. Um, and also I think just, um, kind of as a mindset, having, I think in this sort of, as we were kind of talking about worldview and, uh, the legislator and politically, public education today needs to be competitive. And we, we live in a competitive world and a political world. And parents are, are competitive and we're competing with charter school education in Pinellas County. And we want to make, uh, public schools the best that they can be. So I think we need to have a competitive edge in what we're offering and that kind of education that we're able to provide. And we have all these structures and supports in place to do it. And it's just going to take, you know, looking to the future of what's it going to be? So I think that that's going to be an important emerging issue for a new leader.
Great. Ms. Edmund?
Mrs. Toney has had her hand raised.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see her hand. Ms. Heine, I'll come to you next.
Um, obviously what's going on with the pandemic as well as recruitment and retention? I won't give you a long story.
And I'm going to guess recruitment and retention is both in the instructional side and in the support side.
Right.
Okay. Just want to be clear. Cause some districts might say, no, we have everything we need in one area, but I, I just didn't think that was the case here. Ms. Heine, I apologize.
Similar to recruitment and retention, I just think thriving, thriving teachers. You know, we see the, um, you know, you see articles in all the, uh, professional publications or things like this about burnout. And, and I think it has been a tough couple of years. Um, and then with all the, with all the civic discourse and sometimes negativity around education, there's no way that that doesn't impact a teacher on the classroom level to feel proud. Like I just desperately want our teachers to feel really proud when they say, I'm a teacher. But when there's so much public discourse that's so negative around education, you know, it's difficult. So I think the thriving teachers thing is just, is just really important. So retaining and recruiting, just like, um, Ms. Edmund said. We could have a much longer conversation about that, but that's something that I think is really, really important to us right now. When we look at, and I know our team does a really good job and focuses on that. But when we look at the, on the whole and the numbers and just being sure we have people in our classrooms who are excited to be there and are thriving. Yeah, I would just piggyback on the, on the topic of the legislature. I appreciate what Dr. Grego has done over the years. And it's taken him, I imagine, a number of years to do this and it'll take someone else a number of years to do this. But the fact that he has created the relationships that he has. Um, and then his leadership role, well, first participation in and then leadership role with the Florida, you know, school superintendence group. Um, I think that we've been very fortunate here in Pinellas County with his relationships and what he's done, that we have good relationships and are thought of, I believe, are thought of quite highly. And are asked our opinion oftentimes on things by people who have some influence. And so to maintain those relationships and to, um, you know, maintain Pinellas County in top standing when it comes to the people who are up there talking about this legislation and that they ask our opinion, I think that's not only a superintendent's job, it's all of our job. But to be part of that team, you know, team education and always coming back to the students. Always coming back to the goals of the students and the teachers and learning what our mission is and keeping the politics part out of it. But I think our superintendent has really set us up well there. So the new person kind of folding into that would be wonderful.
Well, and his voice has, has, um, I don't want to say just eclipsed Pinellas County, but his voice has been a statewide voice that we all in education have really relied on and are going to miss. So when you say that, that is not a small piece. That is, he has been a very steady, calm, educated educator perspective that we have really relied on statewide. And, and it will be a, a voice that is, that creates a little empty spot that we are going to have to find ways to develop people to build. So you're, you're on target with that. Ms. Edmund?
Um, I would just like to add family and community engagement. We talked about, um, partnerships with businesses and trying to build upon that. I think, uh, an area we could improve upon is the, trying to get our parents back engaged and, um, even doing some side by side activities. I know that we've done that in the past, but with COVID, we had to kind of fall back. So picking things back up as we open up.
Um, Ms. Cook and then Mr. Dudley?
It, it, uh, my concern is it's sounding almost like a buzzword, but it's really a huge thing. But it's the social and emotional, um, welfare of our staff and our students right now. There has been a big gap. Um, you know, if you look at fifth graders that were going into middle school, they missed that year. And then they jump a year before they're around. So even that growth and development and interaction and, and socializing with each other has been, um, been missed. And, and I'll say almost, um, something that they need to continue the growth as well as just all of the pressure of everything that's been going on. Are we meeting the needs, especially of our staff in that respect, but also of our students? And, um, you know, really focusing in on how do we continue to put the pressure on people? Put the pressure on the students to get it, you know, every day counts. Put the pressure on the futures, every day counts. But yet also understand that there are issues with which all of them are dealing on a daily basis.
Mr. Dudley?
Thank you. Um, do all counties, all school boards in the state meet with their state legislators like we do?
Certainly the goal.
Well, I, I, I think in, uh, the original question about what, what we can do, um, that to me would be a big starter. I think if, if all the school boards made an effort to meet with their legislators, you're breaking the, the legislature down into small pieces. And each 67 school districts have a chance to talk and let them know. Um, I think that would go a long way toward, you know, rectifying some of the problems. If, you'd imagine the clout at Miami-Dade or Duval County, a lot of, you know, a lot of legislators. And, um, and there are different parties. If they meet with them and tell them, you know, the school board system says, you know, this is what we're trying to accomplish and we need your help and, you know, do it that way, perhaps we can maybe bring about some change. But if they don't meet with them, then the legislators, legislators take it upon themselves to do what they pretty much take, go, take.
I'll say a lot of them meet with them. They don't all have the same relationship we do. Some of them have very strong, good relationships.
That's what I was referring to. I, I, you know, meeting, to me, meeting and that to me is showing a type of relationship.
Right.
And when you don't do it at all, it's like, well, you know, do they care? Do they?
That's one of the advantages of the various consortiums throughout the state too.
Yeah, I think, I think that would be a
Larger numbers.
A terrific asset to, you know, maybe changing the way people think.
So that kind of takes us into the very next category, which is discussing roles, relationships, responsibilities, areas to continue, areas to strengthen. And the first category under external is the congressional delegation. So when you talk about your legislative delegation, it sounds like I understand kind of that you guys have a pretty good working relationship there. Is the congressional, is the relationship with the congressional delegation similarly positioned?
We don't really meet with them, but
We, we have a relationship with them, but we don't focus in on that relationship. But if you called Gus Billarakas, he will answer the phone. He does things with us. He knows who we are. He's very involved. We have the relationship. We just don't focus on that quite as much.
Did you want to say something, Ms. Heine?
I, I agree with, I think, um, I mean, from my perspective on a short time here, we don't have the same formal school board with that delegation relationship. We haven't created a platform that we purposely communicate. We probably all have individual relationships with our congresspeople. Um, and so, and I think they feel positively, but we have not focused on federal legislation or federal support in the time.
Well, I don't think any of your congressmen are on education committees. And that, that makes a, a big difference to where they spend their time. Uh, do you have any? I can see your head thinking.
Yeah, no, I keep in touch with them. But the, um, this kind of comes and goes with the platform at the federal level.
Yeah.
I can safely say in the last seven, eight years, there really hasn't been as much of a need.
Right.
Now, there, there is starting to develop that ability recently in the current legislation. The current, um, leadership in Washington that may have potential or may have benefits for the education silos. So I, we are getting back engaged with them very recently. I had conversations yesterday as a recent, and because there's potential funding for incentives and new things for school districts, infrastructure for school districts where those weren't. So the relationship tends to come and go where there's, um, something that could impact the local school district.
Anybody else want to say anything about congressional? Anybody else want to say anything about the legislative relationships? I know you're getting ready to have some term limited, some long-term people who have served this area, both in the House and the Senate, term limited out. So you're going to be getting some new, which means that relationship is going to have to be rebuilt with new. It might be people from the House moving over or whatever. But I do know that you guys, you guys are going to lose some Pinellas County long-term serving people. Um, what about county government? What's the relationship with county government?
Well, I, I'm on the, Carol and I are both on the safety. So there, there is a, a working relationship there with school safety. And, and, uh, those are all municipalities within the county. And, um, we, we share information and back and forth. And, uh, there, there's been a concerted effort, uh, on county government. And well, and a group of municipalities in there to, um, to, you know, help us with crosswalks and bus stops and all that kind of stuff. So there is, um, some relationship there. The, um, when I was on the, on St. Pete City Council, we had an education committee and I was chair of it. Now, we typically, you know, we don't have a whole lot to do with, with them because of the governance. But, um, it's, it's there and, uh, the St. Pete had the Big Apple that the mayor put in as incentives. And those are the kinds of things that, that resonate with, with citizens. And, uh, uh, so there is, but it, it's not universally done in, within our county. And, uh, I know in, in St. Pete, it was, uh, Mayor Baker, that was a big deal for him. And, uh, so, uh, there's an attempt, it could be a lot stronger, I think. There are 24 municipalities. And, uh, you know, some are, you know, two blocks long, but they're still, you know.
They have their identity and pride.
Right, right.
Unique district that way because it's 24 mayors, 24, I mean, you're not going to get that replicated a lot of places, so.
They do have, um, many of the municipalities have recognition similar to the Red Apple, like was implemented with, with Mayor Baker. Like Tarpon has a, a program and Clearwater has a program. And so they, a lot of our programs, a lot of municipalities have recognition programs or they partner, um, like their, their council members partner in our schools. Also our strategic planning department shares all of our strategic plan and legislative platform and so on with all the municipalities and, um, their mayors and council members. And we have our Health and Human Services Committee, which works with the county and the school board and the sheriff's department and JWB. And then we have, um, we're very fortunate. I think we have a former school board member on our county commission. So that's a nice, um, knowledge base to have represented there, you know? So as well as many of our county commissioners being directly involved with that, with our schools in other ways, either as volunteers or, you know, to attend things and participate and come to our teacher of the years. And, you know, so, so I think there's, um, a lot of partnership in terms of making aware and some collaboration in certain avenues, but certainly something that could be further developed potentially. But, and also our superintendent sits on the board for JWB and for which has a county commissioner representative too. So there's, and our staff works directly with county for, on a number of county staff. So, you know, our Donna Cecilian works with, uh, what's the new person, Lea, Leana? The person at, at the county and mental health. So there's, there's those relationships and some of the cities have an education liaison. Like Leah McCray was our liaison from St. Pete. And some other cities as well have someone who, a staff member who supports, um, keeping people informed. So there's, there's a lot of strength in the county government and municipal government to want to support education.
Yeah, it sounds like you guys have a lot of pieces in place and they continue to evolve.
Yeah, we have a good working relationship with the county commission, um, as well as the sheriff and all law enforcement. We have very good working relationships with them, um, you know, as they are providing security in our schools as well.
And the county provided nurses to our, helped us start nursing in our school prior, long, not long, but a while before COVID, fortunately before. So, and, and other partnerships in place, like Mr. Dudley said, with transportation as we, you know, Pinellas Transit partnerships and then working with the, like you said, crosswalks and things like that. So there's a lot of partnerships to help.
Ms. Heine, I saw your hand.
It's, it's separate, but I, I, now that we're talking about municipalities, I do think it would be interesting, you know, it doesn't need to be a platform as formal as our legislative platform, but to sort of, because I'll have people say, you know, what can we do? You know, how can we help? How can we? And I would love to say you can do these four things. And for us would be on like the same page. Now, we have many municipalities throughout this county. So, and it depends on the size and, you know, all those kinds of things. But maybe, maybe at a future date, we could bring some of it together. I would love to hear from all of you, all of you think, you know, what can we ask them? What's in their purview and what would be good for us to advocate for from them? So separate conversation.
Anything else on municipalities or county government that we would want to hear?
Well, I was going to say for community partners in that next section coming up there. A classic example is what we're getting ready to build a new middle school. We have partnership with the YMCA. And, uh, so I think there are, there are opportunities that, uh, that we certainly are taking advantage of. And, um, that we, we, we have a big plot of land. The city is going to contribute a portion. YMCA is going to do a portion. The school system is on a portion. Community involvement. a portion. Community involvement, and that's good.
Is it a charter middle school? A regular middle school? Traditional?
Have they decided what we're going to do yet with that?
Not a charter.
All together now.
I asked it because in some counties, the YMCA has charter schools. That's why I'm specifically asking.
That's a partnership school.
Got it.
Partnership school.
I think one of the, if I could add, the, when you talk about community partners, the, you mentioned it before, and I'm not just saying this because Stacy's sitting next to you, but one of the strongest partners that we have, and the superintendent can rest on, is the Pinellas Educational Foundation. The connection with businesses is second to none. And I know on paper, every district, I've been to those banquets and have worked, I know everyone has a foundation. Some are highly functional, some are not. And some, even if they are, they don't have that type of relationship where you can be that, what we call her before, critical friend, you know. And I value that immensely. So whoever comes in, they need to understand that this is a non-negotiable, that foundation has to be hedged. And the relationship is stronger than ever, and it's going to continue, needs to continue with that. So I'm not just saying that because Stacy's sitting there and say it if she wasn't here.
Well, thank you for saying it.
It's good to hear, right? What about chambers? How many chambers do you interface with?
Not that many. There's so many, you know, it's, it's a challenge because there's 24 mayors, all the city councils. You got chambers, some of them you have economic development arms of multiple. You have the county, you have St. Pete, you have Clearwater. So they're all, it's just a, it's the flavor of Pinellas, and you got to be able to navigate it and understand where you might be getting too granular, where the superintendent's job is to educate and run the district.
Right.
Sometimes they are fine with that too, by the way. So you have some municipalities that are on the beaches. They don't have a school in their area. They love school, they love kids. But you know what? We, I worry about the sand erosion, and that's, that's the extent of my worst. And so we, the person has to understand what's important to who and how they can navigate through that. You don't have to include all. I, I always go, typically invited to their luncheons where all of the mayors come together. That's a hoot. And, and they have an opportunity to speak. And I try to get to, I think next week, I'm speaking to Railtors Association in this district, but, but also at Largo and Largo Community Center and Largo Government. So, you know, you get out there and you make those connections. But there's a lot of them, including chambers. And whenever there's an invite, I'll be there. But it's a lot.
Yeah, I think that's something our board can help with.
Yeah, the board can do a lot, yeah.
I think we would all be glad to go speak to a chamber, an economic development, you know. I mean, we, you know, and, and we do. We go speak to Rotary, you know, when we're so.
Rotary's, a lot of great service organizations.
The more purposefully we can invite ourselves, you know, even the better. But if you've got seven people here who are willing to do those meetings, so that you can run the, run the district.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. I think seemingly, just based on even stuff we've done with the Ed Foundation, we have a strong relationship with the St. Pete Chamber and some of the bigger municipalities that have Chamber, like Clearwater. But there's other, I think that that's kind of a growth area, because chambers, a lot of them want to sponsor events. They want to help with scholarship programs. They, there are businesses that want to be involved and may not know to go through the Ed Foundation, like the Palm Harbor Chamber's got like 700 businesses, and they keep trying to give money away for different programs. And there's just certain things that, you know, to me, that's just a growth. There's connecting to more of them, because we have like a strong St. Pete focus. And I think that maybe even, you know, that for a person coming in, the northern part of the county doesn't have as strong of a business focus, I guess, in everything that we do as a district. When we look at stuff, it's always a lot of St. Pete and maybe some Clearwater. There's, it's not always balanced in the business arena of what we're doing.
I think that's where also having like a little list of, here's the six things, or here are the different levels you could sponsor something, or like just having a really clear, we'd all be happy to get out there and.
Right. And I think it's nice to, to have the resource of the Ed Foundation. I know individuals who've asked me anything about scholarship opportunities or doing, starting those kinds of things. I send them to the Ed Foundation because they facilitate so many of our scholarship opportunities throughout the county. And students know that's a go-to, please. Or businesses who want to get involved or mentor, people who want to mentor, you know, so sending them to Lunch Pals or to take stock. So there's, there's opportunities for, you know, those, those are the things I typically, if folks ask, how can we help? I say, you know, if you're, if you're, your time, talent and treasure are really the categories that things fall into. So if you're willing to give your time as a mentor, these are the mentor opportunities. If you want to give your talent to, to involve, then partner with a school through the Ed Foundation. Or if you want to donate, you can scholarship or adopt a school or adopt a classroom. Those are all through Ed Foundation. So utilizing their website and becoming like really, any candidate would want to become very familiar with the opportunities and things that exist within the Ed Foundation for community. So they could then be aware of things that are happening already, and they can direct them there.
You mentioned church. So let me ask, to what degree are faith-based organizations involved in the district? If at all? Sometimes local churches adopt elementary schools for backpacks or meals, or to what degree?
We had a really active group with FAST, with, with faith through action and strength together. And they had taken over, they're an interfaith organization that has taken, that has different initiatives. Several years ago, they really promoted reading as their area of focus and worked really hard to try and push forward an agenda specific to a reading program. And then following that, they were very active in trying to help us with our positive behavior supports plan and trying to make sure that we utilized a particular approach. So I think it would behoove any incoming superintendent to be aware of that group. That would, you know, and how, how active and involved they are. They have, I think their next initiative right now is going to be more around conservation and, and not necessarily education, but that, that's an active group in our community that at times has been incredibly involved in coming to meetings and, you know, trying to move initiatives forward.
And a lot has to do with their leadership too, because they, they can be very abrasive, but they, you know, some of us have had not good experiences with them. And it, and other times ago, and it's, it's better. So that's, that's kind of a hit and miss.
We have churches randomly throughout the county that will do, you know, back to school things, backpacks and that type of thing. We have several that will do, you know, pack a sack for weekend food and that type of thing. So randomly throughout, there's nothing that we have done that I'm aware of with the community that, I mean, with the faith base, that this is, this is our project with faith-based community. They are doing it because they want to help us. And they, they lean more to reaching out to us than we reaching out to them.
Where this comes in is very active, more than, and I like the structure that it is. It's not a board, a superintendent's directed. It's a community issue.
Right.
So, I mean, the church I go to does the lunch, the, the things. It's very quiet, but it's a neighboring elementary school. And then we're going to also use that, some of that space. And so you'll see those relationships because the church picks up the neighboring school.
Right.
That is the best partnership you can ever have, because they get to know one another on a personal level. They really care about each other. They, they help each other. They open up their doors for one another. And those are the things that, you know, if you have good leaders at your school site and good leaders at the church, it'll happen.
A lot of churches provide areas for kids to go in and study time.
After school and tutors and things like that?
There's no descriptive menu for those.
You brought up PAL, and that was my next question, is are there any community partnerships or relationships that we haven't hit on yet that you would want to kind of point to?
PAL is a big one in St. Pete.
Okay. I'm sorry?
Art Club.
Art Club.
Yeah, the Y.
Art Club, right. Well, every, every year around exam time, all the churches' kids are in praying for grades.
That's their contribution.
Any other community partners that we would want to highlight or recognize or at least be aware of?
Well, those are two big ones, R and PAL.
And really Lunch Pals. Nicole mentioned that, you know, it's people that will leave work for a little bit of time and come in and be a mentor. Also volunteering and that type of thing.
And that was, that was.
Through Raymond James?
Through Raymond James Financially, initiating fund staff to support this Lunch Pals program.
Yeah, now they're out recruiting everywhere.
And it mirrors our take stock children, which is related to the scholarship program and mentoring. So.
Is there anything with the Marlins or anything with?
All the Rays, yeah.
I said Marlins, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I meant the Rays, I meant the Rays.
They have a foundation and they, you know, participate. I know that they're.
They do, and they do a lot of donation stuff.
Yeah, like Raymond will come to an activity, either get tickets or.
And they, they have one of their games that begins the year where they fill the backpacks or stuff like that.
You really just have to ask.
Stuff like that.
So they do?
Yes.
They do stuff, right.
Give our teacher the, the year sweet. I mean, we have a Pinellas.
Pinellas ninth.
Ninth there.
Okay. But not at Marlins Stadium?
No.
If you can find anybody at Marlins Stadium, nobody goes.
But I think that the, there are other business partners that provide quite a bit more.
Batman builds it.
So, you know, they, while they do some recognition, I mean, like I think of Achiva and other.
The ones related to the foundation.
They're all through the found, again, it goes back to the Education Foundation, those business partnerships that are.
We have great art partners.
The three pro franchises.
We have the Arts Alliance.
Say, that's an arts for complete education.
So the Arts for, the Arts Alliance.
Arts Alliance.
Arts for Complete Education.
They do a lot.
This is very, very influential. I know when I was interviewing, I didn't connect with them.
Yeah. They were huge with the referendum.
Okay.
That's good.
That's an important partnership for sure.
They are.
That's why I'm asking, because I wanted, we want to know these things, what, what's out there and what all.
The community values the arts. You need to know that, and as I do, and this board does, so.
I remember North and South County NAACP that are both involved, that have education chapters and committees. The North and South County NAACP.
We did similar to, we didn't mention that, so I'm just going to mention that. I don't even know if it's, but similar to what we said about churches kind of like being near schools, also fire departments.
Okay.
To come in and do demonstrations or bring the trucks and stuff.
Which is fire. They have, they explore.
We also have two organizations that are the result, and Mr. Kpersky can speak more to it, but of our, with CoQBS and DMAC. So both of those organizations address the achievement gap in, in our schools. And they are well-attended by different community members and community groups, so.
What were the names of those again?
Yeah.
Sure. CoQBS, it's C-O-Q-E-B-S. They're Concerned Organizations for Quality of Education on Black Students.
Oh, nice.
CoQBS, we actually have a legal relationship with them because they are the class representative in a state court lawsuit that we settled that relates to the achievement gap.
Okay.
Between black students and non-black students. So that's a legal relationship, but also there's a non-legal relationship. And board members often attend their meetings.
And it's, yeah, it, it's beneficial because part of the work that they do is in the pre-K area and early education, K, zero to three. And that's a big focus, and as well as post-secondary. So it's important for, you know, we attend and we have staff that attend and, and helping build those relationships and build on the initiatives brought forward by them.
Are those the Bradley Doc nine minutes?
No. And I'm sorry I didn't speak up when we, when we met in the administrator's session last week, but somebody mentioned Bradley MOU. Actually, the Bradley case is our federal desegregation case. So if you hear Bradley, and the class representative there is the NAACP Legal Defense Fund, the, the, the national overarching organization. Actually, the Legal Defense Fund is underneath. But the, the Legal Defense Fund is the federal court case class representative. CoQBS is the state court case class representatives. So we had two different class action lawsuits. The Bradley was our federal desegregation case where most school districts were sued shortly after the passage of the Civil Rights Act in 1964. But the Bradley MOUs have expired. We still do have a relationship with the Legal Defense Fund of the NAACP. And we speak with them, and sometimes we meet with them, and there are legal procedures that we go through with them, not in court, but outside of court. But we focus more and have spent more time recently in recent history with the CoQBS organization as the class representative of the state court case. Sorry.
Yeah, that's an important distinction for us. And I know Ms. Edman had a question, or had some comments.
Including the JWB, Juvenile Welfare Board, as well as the colleges and universities that are near us, like USF, Eckhart, SPC.
We have about three minutes before we're supposed to start our workshop.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we were ending. I thought we had till tune. I am so, so sorry. All right. So then quickly, tell me your final thoughts that we would want to know when people are asking us questions about this district and coming in and applying as superintendent. I'll give each of you like fast, speed round is what I'm trying to say. What would you want us to know? What would you want us to share with applicants for this position?
I'll start. I think they're coming into a well-oiled machine that has a desire to grow and get better constantly. We're not satisfied with where we are. Proud of where we are, but not satisfied.
Okay. Who's next? Ms. Edman?
Our county is very diverse, and embracing the diversity of our county and our students and faculty is important to all.
Okay.
Education first.
Who's next?
I think, I think excellence. I think that, you know, I'm, I'm very proud of Pinellas County Schools. I'm proud to be on our board. I'm proud to be a parent of Pinellas County Schools. And I just think carrying that pride forward, but then doing the work that has the excellence under it so that we can be proud. So I just think someone who is enthusiastic and, and ready to go with everything that's been laid in place and can help us continue to move through, you know, move forward to the whole county chooses Pinellas County.
Okay. Over here.
I think looking towards this county with a positive and high achieving mentality is what we need. We, we have to continuously move the wheels forward, and we also need to do it with a good attitude and a bright outlook.
I think we need someone who is, is willing to think outside the box and react quickly. Like when COVID came. I mean, Dr. Gregor was right on top of it. There was no hesitation. It was smooth. And really, the kids, you know, the whole community benefited because we weren't, you know, going back and forth on the decision of what to do. He had it in place.
Decisive.
And boy, right in we went.
Dr. Carr, then I'll come to you. Dr. Gregor.
I think we have a very stable district that is well-respected and has strong leadership throughout the district, both at, both at the school level and at the district level. It's a well-organized district. I think there are some areas that need some additional attention in terms of equity and early learning achievement. And we've, we've been focusing on those areas. I think it needs to be continued and bolstered.
Dr. Gregor, I'll give you the final word. Dr. Greco, I'll give you the final word.
This is Phil Corbett, and I don't know why I'm doing that today.
See, you should have left it with me not remembering your name.
I love the word stability because it's what I was faced with when I came in 10 years ago, the lack of. And also the, the understanding that a person needs to continue to strive for continual improvement of this district and never really being satisfied and trying to leave a legacy after another 10 years, another 10 years. That's, that's, those are the foundation blocks I think have been well-laid. So build upon them and take full advantage of the work that's been done.
All right, thank you. I am sorry, I honestly thought we had till 10 o'clock, so I apologize, I was timing things differently. But thank you for this information, it's going to help us as people reach out to us and as we reach out to them. As, as always, if you have any questions or comments after the fact, feel free to give us a call because it will help us with our contacts. And thank you for your time this morning.